Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of September 15, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. On March 4, 2020, Governor Gavin Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. We understand that some of the governor's executive orders related to COVID-19 have been rescinded or are due to expire soon. However, some orders remain in effect, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings like this. And as such, Councilmember Freeman and Parlier will be participating by phone, and all council votes tonight will be conducted by roll call. And at this time, Councilmember Smith will offer the invocation. Following the invocation, Stuart Patterson, Acting Director of Public Works, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please stand?
Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for every day. We thank you for the blessing of living in a free country, and we thank you for this great city that we live in. We ask for your guidance as we try to make wise decisions, and that you will guide us and give us the wisdom to move forward in our community. I want to pray especially for our friend, Chris Parlier, and that you be with him and give him peace and relieve his pain. Thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. It's good to see everyone here. Thank you so much for engaging in the civic process and caring about your community. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. And for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by Resolution of the City Council on July 14, 2021. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city, the business of the people. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chamber being cleared. Continued disruption or harassment by any individual may be enforced as a misdemeanor in violation of Penal Code Sections 403, 415, 217.1, or any other applicable law. And now, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations, Item 4A, Proclamation to Jennifer Henry, Executive Director of Links for Life, declaring Paint the Town Pink Month in Bakersfield, California during October 2021.
One in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime. Our mothers, our daughters, our sisters, friends, all women, so many women impacted by this disease. And we know that early detection of breast cancer is so important. Early detection saves lives, and regular self-examination, yearly mammograms are key to helping us fight this terrible disease. And tonight, it's my honor, it's my privilege, on behalf of all the women impacted, to welcome our friends from Links for Life. It's my honor to read this proclamation. The mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California, has officially proclaimed October 2021 as Paint the Town Pink Month in our city, in recognition of the more than 281,000 women in the United States who will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer, and the more than 43,000 women who will not survive this diagnosis. In recognition of the residents of Bakersfield who have fearlessly battled this terrible disease and survived, and those who have bravely lost the fight. In recognition of the unwavering support of family and friends, offering sanctuary and encouragement to loved ones in the midst of treatment. In recognition of Links for Life and other organizations committed to increasing awareness and finding the cure for breast cancer. In recognition of the importance of raising public consciousness and securing funding for research, and in recognition of the efforts to unite our community through awareness and personal experiences by displaying the color pink during the month of October. It's my honor to be able to present this to Jennifer Henry. Jennifer, thank you so much for your service to our community, and it's my honor to present this to you. And please introduce your friends, and you have an opportunity to...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for having us today. It's almost 30 years we've been doing this in Kern County. So, this is Persilla Bakus, who's one of our board members, and Charlotte Brandt, our past president, and another, both survivors and board members. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Go, and council members, for presenting us with this proclamation. This year in Kern County, nearly 400 women will be diagnosed locally, and we'll lose approximately 100 of those women. This past year, we didn't stop with the pandemic. Nearly, we screened nearly 200 women for breast cancer. We provided five needle biopsies for women who had no insurance. We diagnosed one woman with cancer, breast cancer, who was able to receive treatment because of the diagnosis. We had nearly 300 women and men attend support groups. We have a strong Links Hangout, which is for husbands and partners of women who've been diagnosed. And it is a hangout, not a support group, and it is at IMBIB the first Thursday of the month, at 6:30. So if you know someone, please have them go hang out with other men who have survivors. We also introduced a nutrition program that where we will provide up to four $100 grocery cards for women battling cancer during treatment. It's approximately $5,000 out of pocket for a woman while going through treatment. How can we help? We can help with food. So, we've given, we had 42 attend our nutrition class because we have a dietitian who teaches them healthy eating while in treatment, and then we gave out 178 grocery cards. And we closed down during the pandemic. We went all virtual. We filled in 10,000 calls in our office while we were closed. So, please come out on October 2 to the Park at River Walk at 8:30 to join us in the walk. And then on October 22, God willing, we will be at Luigi's Warehouse having a hot pink celebration. So, thank you again for all your support of all of our women in Kern County and those men who are diagnosed. One in, one in 1,000 men will be diagnosed with breast cancer. So, thank you, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
Thank you.
If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give it to the city clerk. Statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk. She will give copies to the council. And if you're here on Workshop Item Consent Calendar Hearing Items 9A through B, and Hearing Item 10A, now isn't the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when the items are called later during the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Again, please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the three-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
Mayor Go, a staff memorandum has been provided transmitting emailed comments. We have received five speaker cards this evening, two regarding e-bikes, and three regarding separate subjects. The first public speaker is Lori Pesante.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lori Pesante, P-E-S-A-N-T-E, and I'm the Director of Government Relations and Civic Engagement for the Deloris Huerta Foundation. I'm here tonight to discuss the topic of redistricting. And for those who may be hearing this term for the first time, long before any of us filled in any bubbles on a ballot or walked into a poll booth, our elected leaders chose us in a process that only occurs every 10 years after the census counts come out. And Monday is when the finalized census counts are coming out, and the City of Bakersfield will be asked to use that data to draw the district that Ms. Gray will have to run for, that, you know, Mr. Smith will have to run for, that everybody will have to run for. And so, with a city as diverse as the City of Bakersfield, and the fact that we only get a chance to do this once every 10 years, I came to this city council on June 2 to ask about, you know, what was happening with the process. I came on August 18 and delivered a letter at that point about the California Fair Maps Act and how the City of Bakersfield is required to engage in public participation. I provided a fun little handout with a bunch of pictures on it, nice little infographics, right? Everybody got a copy, and yet, we're still not seeing that the City of Bakersfield is complying with the Fair Maps Act. And so, we transmitted a letter jointly signed by the Deloris Huerta Foundation, Common Cause of California, and ACLU of Southern California. Each one of you should have received that electronically, and if not, I have a printed copy right here. Basically, we believe that the City of Bakersfield may be violating state law right now in three respects. The redistricting website, redistricting outreach, and public hearings. Now, these will be pretty easily remedied, but it's going to take city staff to address them hopefully immediately. And certainly, Mr. Metta Stein, the Executive Director of Common Cause, is more than willing to come and present on any information that the city might need, might find helpful. In particular, the website is supposed to have the calendar or schedule of all public hearings, of which you're required to have four at least, but that's a bare minimum. I have asked this council to approve hiring a consultant to help with this process because it's very complex. Also, the website should have how to participate, explaining basic information like what is a community of interest. Redistricting is, you know, it takes a little bit of time to figure out, and we're going to need a lot more than 15 minutes to present a map. I'll tell you that right now. I've presented maps in multiple jurisdictions at this point, and to give all the data and explain all of the choices that are being made, and to help the decision-makers understand what they're looking at, you need more than 15 minutes for one subject. So I really encourage the city to expand for the redistricting hearings a great, more time than 15 minutes. And I think basically, the other major item in my six seconds that I have left is to ask you all to essentially address that redistricting website immediately because it's got the boilerplate stuff from the Secretary of State, and it says, "If you want more information, click here," and guess what happens? It takes you right back to the same boilerplate language from the Secretary of State. We're going to need a lot more than that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pesante. For safety, fire safety, we can't have anyone standing, so I'm going to ask all of you who are standing there, there are seats right over here, so you can either choose to sit down or go in the lobby and listen from there. But before we go on, let's have everyone sit down, please. Thank you so much.
Ignacio Morales.
Please introduce yourself.
Absolutely. My name is Ignacio Morales. I'm a senior officer with code enforcement. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Karen Go, and members of council. I'm also a member of my union, SEIU Local 521. A few of our city members, city council members, I've spoken to in the past, as well as you probably have seen me out in the field. For 20 years, I have proudly worked for the City of Bakersfield, helping our residents learn about and comply with city code to keep our neighborhoods safe and well. I know the day-to-day tasks that my fellow coworkers and I are what we keep our city running. I speak with those with titles of secretary, street staff, water resource staff, solid waste staff, police, non-smore staff, and park and recreation staff, to name a few of the 800 city employees that provide service to the community. We love Bakersfield. It is our home. It is also, for some of us, the place we were born and where we do daily business. That is why, when COVID-19 hit, we were not hesitant to continue doing whatever it took to make sure residents still had access to service in which they rely on. Along with the virus, the pandemic brought confusion and uncertainties for all of us. They were uncharted waters. There was not enough personal protective equipment, frontline workers, for frontline workers, and adequate measures to protect us. But we worked as a team to help resolve and do our part to keep ourselves healthy, yet continue to provide outstanding services. I was in close contact with a COVID-19 positive worker, and more than half of Development Service Department workers got sick. Still, we continued to come to work to serve our community with pride and hard work, even though city departments were working under a skeleton crew. We risked our health and our lives, like many service workers in government. Because of these unforeseen crises, we had lacked the appropriate resource that created worries among us. But today, you can take action to help us. We are asking you to do what is right and invest in us frontline workers who risk everything to hold the City of Bakersfield together through crisis. Again, I want to thank you, all the employees. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and members of the council, for your time, your consideration, and your fairness. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. Madam Clerk, next. Thank you. There isn't any applause. I understand how passionate you are, and just a reminder that during this portion of the meeting, we don't have applause. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Next speaker, please.
Emma De La Rosa.
Ms. De La Rosa, would you just hold just for a minute? Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Emma De La Rosa, policy advocate with Leadership Council. My comment is in regards to the rental assistance program, Items E and O. I just wanted to get clarification on the amounts for ERA 1 and ERA, the SRA 1 and SRA 2. It seems like the 9 million, the 9 million allocation is for the federal ERA 2, and then the SRA is about, is a little bit over 10 million. I just wanted clarification because the numbers didn't seem to align according to what we had seen before. I also just wanted to highlight how important this program is. We've been helping the Housing Authority, Vision and Compromiso, with the outreach, and residents definitely need the support, they need the assistance. And I just wanted to share that with y'all because we've had conversations with other folks who, you know, say there's a lot of money just sitting there, and folks are not taking advantage of it, and we want you to know that folks do need the funding, and it's really just, the process is just taking a long time, and folks are just really trying to get all of the money, sorry, are trying to get all of their documents together, but because of the number of documents required and a lot of landlords who are not willing to participate, it's just taking so long to get folks their funding. But just want to highlight again how important it is. Also, October, in October, the evictions process would be able to begin. There, the landlords do have to show that they support, that they helped the tenant with obtaining the rental assistance. If they don't, the courts should be motivating the landlords to apply for the tenants, right? The funding is there, and so the landlords and tenants should both try to get access to this funding. However, should residents be evicted, the Treasury guidelines do allow for other types of expenses such as security deposits, application, screening, rental fees, and hotel stays. I've shared it before, there's folks who have been evicted and are trying to find a place to live and are not able to find a place to live. Therefore, you know, we may have to explore these other options later down the road. Again, just wanted to highlight that and thank the Housing Authority, Heather especially, for their hard work and working with us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. De La Rosa. Mr. Clegg, would you be able to assign some staff later to clarify her questions?
Yes, we can clarify.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the comment. Mr. Clegg, I was going to actually ask you the same thing that the mayor did, but also with regards to actually returning, you know, applications and delivering those resources to those in need and the timelines, can I ask staff to look into the processes? I know you and I have had a conversation about this offline, but if we can continue to monitor the efficacy and the timeliness of our, of our program that we're trying to establish. I know there's a lot of money coming through, there's a lot of programs that we're trying to launch in a short timeline, but if we can just monitor that turnaround time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. I was just informed that our system where we are able to see our agendas is having a problem. And so, colleagues, you're not going to be able to buzz in when you want to speak. I believe our city clerk, I asked her to have some cards available in case. We'll distribute agendas to you all, and if you wish to comment, just hold up, just prop up the card, like stand it up so I'll be able to see. It's hard for me sometimes to see. Doesn't matter what name it is, I'll know who they are. Just stand it up like this if you need to talk. It doesn't matter, I know who you are. Just prop it up so I can see you. Okay. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Mayor Go, the next two speakers are speaking on the same subject of e-bikes.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Let me take off the mic. N95. Good evening. My name is Marion Vargas. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak and for the important work that you all do. Over the past four and a half months, many citizens and representatives from a variety of community organizations have expressed to you their concerns about the dangers of allowing e-bikes on equestrian trails that traverse the Kern River Flood Plain and the Kern River Parkway. We are asking that you address these concerns by initiating action to prohibit e-bikes and other electrically motorized modes of transportation from operating on the primary and secondary flood plains of the Kern River, as well as from any trail designated for equestrian use by the Kern River Plan Element and the Kern River Specific Trails Plan. Thank you for your attention and for your assistance to keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vargas. Next speaker, please. Madam Clerk.
Rich O'Neill.
Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, staff. My name is Rich O'Neill, and tonight I represent the Kern River Parkway Foundation. I'm a walker. And where do I walk? I walk along the Kern River Parkway. Sometimes I walk along the bike path. It's getting pretty crowded out there now. But other times, I walk on a dirt trail that parallels the bike path. And just a month and a half ago, I was walking down that dirt trail with my dog on a six-foot leash, and all of a sudden, an e-bike rider comes rushing around the big shrub, scared the heck out of me. Didn't injure me or anything, we didn't collide, but I was kind of shaking. But I was thinking, what happens if that was a kid walking on the trail, or somebody who couldn't hold the balance as well as I did? But those trails, like the horse trail that Marion spoke about, and the walking trail, they're in the secondary and primary flood plains. We need your help. Is there any way that you can create a rule and ordinance to keep electric motorcycles, e-bikes, and the gas bikes are coming back too, and it's getting very dangerous? Is there any way you can create an ordinance to keep those e-bikes off of the flood plains? Thank you for your help, and we certainly need that right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Calendar Items 8A through 8AQ for approval.
Madam Clerk, what about the workshop?
I apologize, Mayor. It's Item 6A, Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee Update.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Our Keep Bakersfield Committee is a group of very important volunteers that assist us in a number of ways in keeping Bakersfield clean and beautiful, and a number... And a number of those committee members are here tonight to talk about the work of the committee, and would invite their chairperson, Paul Yanez, and others who are going to be speaking tonight to provide a presentation for the council.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Well, I see you changed names.
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome, Mr. Scott.
Welcome, Mayor, city council, staff. It's always, always a pleasure and a privilege to be able to come to you and share with you what your residents are doing in Bakersfield. Paul can't be here tonight, and so he asked me, I'm gonna say what he wrote down for me. Paul, of course, is our current chair, appointed from Ward 7. And as the current chair for Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, along with all the beautiful people behind me, we are Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. On October the 5th, Keep Bakersfield Beautiful will celebrate the 20th anniversary of our affiliation with Keep America Beautiful. Over the past 20 years, the committee and many committee members before us have followed the KBB mission statement, "To engage individuals to take a greater responsibility for improving our community." KBB continues to be a positive impact in our community, though the work of thousands of volunteers, generous sponsors, and the overwhelming support we receive from our city, City Solid Waste Division, staff, together, we all do make a difference. As we move forward, we feel it's important to develop new ways to engage and excite individuals and companies to volunteer and partner with us. We believe this following video will assist us in accomplishing that goal.
When a community thrives, we all thrive. Helping others gives us the power to transform our communities. If we do our best. We will feel proud of our achievements.
We've been associated with Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, or KBB, for about eight and a half years right now. They're wonderful for their support. They do a great job of promoting cleaning up areas around town. They give us gloves, bags, and all sorts of additional support. You really need to research associating with Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. It's a great organization.
We work with KBB for the simple reason to give back to our community and show our support of keeping our community clean and beautifying our city at the same time. You and your organization would benefit so much by partnering with KBB. It engages others to help beautify the wonderful city we call home, and it's vigorous to see younger generations choosing to join in to make sure their community will continue to flourish as they get older.
At Caltrans, we've worked very closely with Keep Bakersfield Beautiful over the last 20 years, just improving the look, the cleanliness, and the aesthetics of the freeways and highways within the city of Bakersfield. It's been an incredible partnership. We've accomplished so much. And I really encourage other groups to be involved, whether private businesses, other government entities, because we're able to do so much more when we're working together.
Together, we can change Kern County and keep Bakersfield beautiful. So we can change our lives and improve the lives of others.
Good evening, Mayor Hall, our, well, I didn't get much sleep last night. Mayor Go and members of the city council. My name is Jennifer Van Alstine. I've been on the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Board since 2011, and I know I've worked with many of you on many projects, so. As Ray has stated, you know, we are coming up on our 20th year anniversary, so I wanted to just highlight some of the accomplishments of Keep Bakersfield Beautiful over the years. KBB hosts one of the largest great American cleanups in the country. And we have done that for several years. In the last 20 years, we've had approximately 132,617 volunteers, contributing 307,460 volunteer hours, saving the city roughly $6 to $8 million, depending on what math you use. Yeah, $6 to $8 million. We've picked up nearly 4,400,000 pounds of litter, and we have planted over 4,000 trees. You know, and on top of the many other projects that we partner with various groups on as well. And I'll introduce John Enricus.
Good evening, Mayor Go, councilmembers, and city staff. My name is John Enricus. I'm one of the founding board members of Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. Seven of, excuse me, seven of us were first appointed by the city council in August of 2000. And at that time, we were under the Parks and Recreation Department. And 2004, we moved over to the Solid Waste Department. We received our Keep America Beautiful training and certification in October of 2001. Our first projects were to clean the on-and-off ramps on Highway 99. Well, we learned the freeways were hard work, were very dangerous, Mayor Go, very dangerous, and there was a lot of trash. We would average 40 to 50 bags of trash every Saturday. By Tuesday, the area we cleaned looked like we'd never been there. So we reached out to Caltrans to become a partner, because we realized this wasn't a Caltrans problem, it was a community problem. We've been meeting with Caltrans for 20 years now, and had a lot of success. Our first big project was the tree planting on Highway 99. We were able to plant 600 trees between 2005 and 2010. Caltrans provided the additional funding for $2,500, the initial funding for $2,500, and we raised an additional $26,000 to complete the project. In 2013, Caltrans lost its inmate program and reached out to us for ideas on how to continue the cleanup efforts. That's when the partnership between Caltrans, the city of Bakersfield, and the Bakersfield Homeless Center began to provide the workforce. Well, they started with 18 crew members. Today, they have 30 crew members. Because of the success of this program in Sacramento, they used us as a model for the Veterans Outreach Program, which also provided labor on the freeways. Other communities in California have also used our model here in Bakersfield. And also, I'd like to thank Kern Cog for their ongoing support of the partnership with Caltrans. And Mayor Go, I'd like to thank the city staff and the council for the ongoing support. Thank you very much, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Ray Scott, president of Keep California Beautiful.
Mayor Go, would you please join me down here at the podium? You know, being the president for Keep California Beautiful for the last 10 years, I've been able to represent Keep Bakersfield Beautiful at the National Conference. National Conference where Keep America Beautiful looks at Bakersfield as a rock star. Because, I mean, we've had 36 awards in 20 years. You've got, standing here tonight, you have three national individual award winners. And once again, it's because of Bakersfield. Not that any one of us individually are anything, but together, we are strong, we are awesome. And we have 24 active programs with Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. And that's because of your residents. And so, one of the things that I really liked was an older slogan for Bakersfield. "Bakersfield: Life as it should be." That's Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. Well, Mayor Go, once again, on a state level, local level, state level, national level, Keep Bakersfield Beautiful is exemplary. And because of that, there's a certificate of recognition from Keep America Beautiful, Senator Shannon Grove, and then the Kern County supervisors, who specifically says, "We are an exemplary group for our community." And that's, once again, because of Bakersfield.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you so much. On behalf of the citizens of Bakersfield, I'm pleased to receive this, and thank you to our Keep Bakersfield Beautiful team. This is truly a labor of love. It is truly community, caring about our community. This is our community. And I couldn't be prouder of the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful volunteers who come out week after week, caring for our community. So thank you.
Is it okay to clap?
Councilmember Parlier.
I just want to thank all of our volunteers with Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. You're right, you really are rock stars within the community. You help every ward within the city. Great things. One thing I want to ask staff, though, and I know that KBB has worked year in, year out, to try and get money to help support that organization, and it got pretty tough during the COVID period, but yet they do so many great works within the city, from murals on utility boxes to planning, you know, various things throughout the city, through the downtown areas. We provide maybe some sort of support. Probably wouldn't be a whole bunch of money, but maybe we look at augmenting something to help that committee that, again, does so many great works within our city, that maybe like $10,000 or $20,000 or something like that could be, you know, range within a regular budget for that committee. I know that's kind of outside the norm, but again, I think this committee is outside the norm in all the great things that they do. And, you know, as expressed by Jennifer, the millions of dollars that has been saved via this committee to help the city of Bakersfield. So again, I just want to give that thanks, and if staff are looking to that, I sure appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I was just reflecting, there are two types of people. There are the folks who just sit and complain about problems that we're facing, and then there are those who actually get to work to solve problems. And y'all are the folks who are trying to solve problems in our community. And you do it because you love our community, you want to make our community a better place to live for all of us. And I really appreciate all of that. You know, you don't get paid for it, you don't, you're not required to do this voluntary work. You do it because it's part of your value system. And all the volunteers who've contributed throughout the last 20 years have made the city of Bakersfield a better place over the last 20 years. And I'm certainly one to celebrate all of your work and accomplishments. And we should have a big giant cake somewhere to just cut at some point to really celebrate the monumental accomplishment for 20 years, and then look forward to the next. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say the same thing. It's just amazing, 20 years still picking up trash along the freeway and all over the city. And I know you guys are out there all the time, and, but the important thing is like what you said, it brings the community together to work for the community. And that's how we become better, is working together. And Keep Bakersfield Beautiful does that better than anybody else. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. You know, we have an opportunity for all of you to come out and join a cleanup. In the next few weeks, we'll be gathering at the Fox Theater. John Enricus, what's the date of that? Come out the following Saturday at 7:00. 7:30 at the Fox Theater. Let's Keep Bakersfield Beautiful together. Thank you so much. We appreciate all of your hard work, your volunteerism, and caring for our community. Mr. Clegg, any further comments before we go to the public?
Thank you, Mayor. No other comments.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any requests to speak on this topic? From the public?
Mayor Go, no public comment cards have been received for this item.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Parlier.
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8AQ for approval.
Vice Mayor.
We have a request to pull item 8AL from the consent calendar. So my motion is to approve items 8A through 8AQ, except for item 8L.
Thank you. You have a motion. Madam Clerk, roll, please.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Parlier.
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, item 8AL, Vice Mayor.
I believe that Councilmember Smith has that be polled.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, this item is about purchasing Motorola radios. And I know that we're changing the radio system soon, and just want to confirm that this doesn't guide us in a direction to what we're going, and kind of some background on that.
Thank you, Councilmember, for the opportunity, and Mayor and Council. I think this is an item worthy of some clarification, because the city and county have been participating in a request for proposals for the replacement of our entire radio infrastructure system, as well as radios themselves. This item is distinct and separate entirely from that larger RFP procurement, and want to give some context as to what this is. We have a very aged radio system. We have a number of radios that age out each year. We've also been fortunate with the Public Safety Vital Services Tax to be adding new public safety staff. And so for the last three years, we have been adding radios to our system to replace those that have gone out of service, and for new employees. What could typically be an 18- to 24-month process to do a radio replacement program, it's taken us, you know, three to five years to really envision that, plan that, and bring it forward. It's still not complete. And so, as I mentioned, for the past three years, we have actually had to take these sort of stop-gap measures to keep our system going until we get to the larger procurement that will happen with the regional radio program. So this selection tonight does not preclude which route we would go with at RFP, or which vendor we would choose. These radios will have basic interoperability. Also, our assumption is that as other radios continue to age out of the system, we're going to be, you know, using these newer radios. And as we purchase several hundred new radios with RFP, that's going to be a much larger program, much larger purchase. And we'll be, you know, phasing those in, and these radios will have some useful life and that interoperability that I mentioned. So again, it's a stop-gap measure. The time it would take to complete our RFP, or some other procurement process, would put us in a position that we may not have the equipment available to our public safety employees to do the good work that they need to do. It's not ideal, I think, I would acknowledge, but just this temporary stop-gap measure to make sure we have enough radios for now, until we complete that larger process.
Thank you. With that background, I will move to approve item AL.
Thank you. You have a motion. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Parlier.
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. It's now time for the consent calendar hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all the items under consent calendar hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearings portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please read? We do not need to read the items, do we? So, at this time, do we have any comments from Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Would just reflect for item 9A, this is a hearing that is required by state law, that the city hosts this hearing. These dollars are not city dollars. These are dollars that would come from other funding sources and would just reflect that piece, but otherwise, no other comments on the consent hearings.
Is there anyone who would like to have any of the hearing items removed from the audience? I'm opening up the hearings now. Seeing none, I will close the hearings and return it to staff, to council for comment and action. Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Vice Mayor.
I move approval of consent calendar items A and B.
You have a motion? Please cast your vote.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Parlier.
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item.
Hearings item 10A. Public hearing to consider a resolution acknowledging Casa Esperanza Transitional Home for Women and Children as a residential use located at 1421 Panorama Drive and recognizing the Casa Esperanza Good Neighbor Policy. A staff memorandum has been provided regarding this item, transmitting additional public comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm accusing myself tonight from this item based upon a possible appearance of impropriety and potential due process concern. I'll be stepping off the dais now.
Thank you. For public hearings, each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement succinctly, so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff's recommendation first, and we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on, and at the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. Quickly enter your statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk. She'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Mr. Clegg, do you wish to make any comments at this point before we open the hearing?
Mayor Go, and Council, just to provide some context that was provided in the admin report, but related to this item, in 2020, Casa Esperanza applied for a conditional use permit to the city for a rooming house at this location. And the city followed our existing process for that conditional use permit at that time. It went through the Planning Commission process, was recommended by the Planning Commission to the City Council for consideration. And ultimately, in January of 2021, the City Council held an appeal to the Planning Commission decision in support of the conditional use permit. The appeal was requesting denial of the conditional use permit. City Council held that hearing and chose to uphold the appeal and to deny the conditional use permit for this project at this location. It is relevant that subsequent to that time, the city was in a process of updating our municipal code to reflect some of the requirements in our housing element that had been adopted by the state to add definitions to particular uses, including transitional and supportive housing. And subsequent then to also the city adopting those new definitions, we were contacted by the State Department of Housing and Community Development to clarify the state interpretation of the language. I think it is fair to point out that city staff had multiple conversations with the state relating to that interpretation of our definition and state law, and received very specific direction from the state as to their interpretation of state law related to transitional housing as a residential use. And so, at this point, the city has worked closely with Casa Esperanza to develop a Good Neighbor Policy that is reflective of the same types of practices that were included in the conditional use permit, to demonstrate their efforts in good faith to be neighborhood partners as a measure that we could proactively pursue. And this item is before council in recognition of where we understand the state direction on that definition to be and to acknowledge the Good Neighbor Policy for Casa Esperanza. And with that, would be open to moving forward with the public hearing.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kristen Yorquitas, and I live next door to the proposed project. I'm providing copies because of the electronic transmission did not come through before your packets were made for tonight. We do have a couple of issues at stake here today, one on the project and one on some public notification of this hearing today. So, you'll be receiving a copy of the letter from the law firm representing our neighborhood group. I'm here today to offer you like one collective voice rather than several of us coming up and speaking on this matter. So, the letter addresses my concern in legal language. I've got some in my own non-lingual language as well. Good evening, councilmembers. And Mayor Go, last Friday at 2:56 PM, I was given a telephone courtesy notice of a hearing item on the City Council agenda for tonight to decide if Casa Esperanza's transitional home project at 1421 Panorama Drive merits approval of a resolution to allow them permission to operate, even though your council upheld the appeal brought forth in January and denied Casa Esperanza conditional use permit. A newspaper notice was only published in the Bakersfield Californian yesterday and today. I asked the city clerk's office for clarification on why the public notification process was so different for the CUP hearing than this item, which is also listed on the agenda today as a hearing. After conferring with four staff members in the office, I was told it was not required. As an interested party, the public, and more specifically, the residents around and being affected by the project, that is the subject of this hearing, should have been given proper notice. The first part of my comment today is on this deficiency, and I call into question the fidelity at which the city upheld its duty to properly notify the public on this item. Secondly, I am disappointed that the city has disregarded its rules with regards to the City Council's decision. Under Bakersfield Municipal Code 17.64.090, quote, "For conditional use permits on appeal following the hearing, the City Council may grant, grant in modified form, or deny the requested conditional use permit. The decision of the council shall be final and conclusive," end quote. Your council upheld the appeal and denied the requested CUP. Therefore, we request that the council uphold the stated rule in our city's ordinance that your decision was firm and final. Thirdly, I want to make it abundantly clear that neighbors, many of them are here today with their kids, in order to be here, to make a presence of our position, we want to make it very clear that us, as well as others who have been following this project in the news, continue to oppose the operation plans of Casa Esperanza on the basis that their project does not fall under the allowable use of a R1 one-family dwelling zone in the city of Bakersfield. Casa Esperanza has also been unwilling to modify or take neighbors' concerns into consideration in any shape or form. Casa Esperanza did not consult nor offer for review their proposed Good Neighbor Policy to any neighbors around the property. Casa Esperanza had a donation of services to trim the trees and bushes on the property. Not only, so I'm directly next to a share about 250 feet of fence line, so they had some work done on our shared property line. I was not notified of this work on the shared property line, but the contractor hacked a shared privacy bush literally in half along the line of our property, and that privacy wall has now died. I communicated the state of this to Casa Esperanza board members, and they have agreed to replace the dead bushes, but that does not replace the well-developed green wall that had been growing for years that cannot be replaced with some young bushes overnight. A live-in neighbor would likely have knocked on my door or called me prior to doing any work on a shared property space. Casa Esperanza did not have this consideration. Their actions to be a good neighbor continue to be disjointed from their words and promises. I am appalled at the presence of the line at the bottom of the Good Neighbor Policy that reads that their plans include, quote, "recruiting volunteers, partnering organizations, and personnel from the surrounding community when feasible, but recognizing that the best qualified resources may reside out of area." This sounds like a slippery slope to outsource operations of this project to another agency that is not even connected to the Bakersfield community. I am appalled at this blatant disregard for even trying to pretend that they intend to operate in good faith and as a good neighbor. Finally, I understand that the city manager's office has been in communication with both Casa Esperanza and the state of California Department of Housing and Community Development. Without a legally binding mandate that's state law, in this case, what we have determined they are referencing is SB 2 from 2007, overwrites local jurisdiction and conformity to our local laws and ordinances. Therefore, this matter is completely discretionary. Under SB 2, subsection 65583, and then another subsection titled A6, it states that, quote, "Transitional housing and supportive housing shall be considered a residential use of property and shall be subject only to those restrictions that apply to other residential dwellings of the same type in the same zone." Under our Bakersfield 17.04.200, Bakersfield's definition of one-family dwelling is "a detached building containing only one kitchen, which building is designed and used exclusively for occupancy by one family." That is our language and our code that is on the record right now. Therefore, SB 2 allows transitional housing as a byright use only if it complies with the local ordinances for the zone that the property resides in, which in this case is the property, is that the property be occupied by one family. Six family units living under one roof, under the supervision of one live-in residential advisor and two staff members present during business hours, does not conform to the allowable use of a one-family dwelling. Therefore, Casa Esperanza's project does not conform to the allowable uses for this property. The state law does not give a transitional project the right to operate without following the same restrictions that apply to other properties like our homes in the area. Our local ordinance clearly defines what are allowable uses in R1 zones in the city of Bakersfield, and a multifamily use is not one of them. If the California State Department of Housing and Community Development wants to work with the city of Bakersfield and continue to evaluate the ability for transitional and supportive housing projects to be implemented, it can do that when the city updates its housing element. There is no reason to make up rules for the sake of this project right here and now. If it doesn't meet the existing criteria, Casa Esperanza can alter its plan or wait for revision to city ordinances that may make their project fit the criteria in the future, but as of this minute, it does not. Approving this resolution will set a dangerous precedent in the city of Bakersfield and open the door to transitional and supportive housing projects such as those for homeless, sober living, medically assisted living, recently released incarcerated individuals, and others to pop up and begin operating anywhere in the city without approval or oversight. There are individuals and businesses that operate these types of housing that may be motivated more by the money tied to providing housing for these individuals than actually operating projects that will help these vulnerable populations. Please see the danger of a precedent like this. This project should be about quality over quantity. Shoving 22 individuals under one roof in a dorm-like room setup does not seem in line with their mission to provide a home-like atmosphere for the residents. There is one living room, one dining room, and one kitchen in this house as common space. Residents will likely be confined to their rooms for personal space. How is this the best way to achieve their mission? Instead, it sounds like quantity is the most important factor so that they can report to the city and the state how many people have come through their doors, leaving out the true measure of success on how well they were able to help these individuals. The city of Bakersfield and Kern County have both received glowing reviews of the implementation of their navigation centers, whose primary focus is emergency shelter. This project as a transitional home is supposed to be the next step for a homeless individual. We are not fooled by their promises on paper that say they want to provide a home-like atmosphere when their actions say something completely different. Therefore, I request the following. First, that no decision be made on this hearing matter tonight due to insufficient public notice not allowing for our lawyers to analyze the resolution that was made publicly available only last Friday, the 10th, and being brought forth today. The city has a constitutional duty to notify the public of its matters in a timely manner that will give adequate notice to allow for public participation. That has been neglected in this case. Secondly, regardless of the nuances of public notification in this case, myself and the neighbors in and around Panorama Drive reiterate our position that the council stand by their final and conclusive earlier decision to deny Casa Esperanza permission to operate at 1421 Panorama Drive without modification of their project to include only one family or selecting a property that is zoned and suited for occupancy by multiple families. Casa Esperanza's project does not fit the allowable use at this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Would you reset the clock, please? Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Well, good evening, Mayor Go, city council members and staff. My name is Lisa Elsie Watson, and I am a board member for Casa Esperanza. I'm here today to speak on behalf of Casa Esperanza and our project. We're very excited to be here, and today is a result of many, many discussions with city council, staff members, community, our board. Our mission is to provide women and children in Bakersfield with an innovative and holistic program and a sustainable model that supports their transition to permanent housing and permanent employment. We acknowledge our agreement with the city to address homelessness that many, many suffer through no conscious fault of their own. Our purpose is to break the cycle of homelessness and poverty, one family at a time. We are that place. We will be that place, where women and children can pick up the pieces of their lives, where they can heal and begin anew. We all deserve a second chance. We created the Good Neighbor Policy to share with our neighbors our good intentions. It's a little like dating. You make promises at the beginning, but you have to allow each other time to walk together to really see the benefit of the partnership, the union. And so, our plan- And so, our plan is to operate in a manner that not only allows our neighbors dignity and honor, but also those residents who will live within those walls. The city’s proposed resolution recognizing Casa Esperanza also confirms the city’s compliance with state law and the city’s housing element, and we applaud the city of Bakersfield for taking this important step. We didn’t get here alone. Our board worked very hard, as I’ve stated, with city staff, with business leaders, with community people, listening. We listened to hear what their concerns were. As a matter of fact, I spent some time at the property, and we heard their concerns about the people who would occupy Casa Esperanza. But what we know is that the people who will occupy Casa Esperanza are women who have their children, who perhaps through relationships that have taken a different turn, through unemployment challenges, have found themselves in a position of hard luck. And we want to give them an opportunity to stand on their own feet. These women will contribute 30 to 60% of their earnings to the house for their own benefit when they move into permanent housing. I want to share with you a letter that I received from a neighbor, and I’d like to read it to you. It’s a brief. It says, “We live in the neighborhood on Radcliffe Avenue, in which the property to be used as Casa Esperanza is located, just a few houses in on Haley Street, so I guess we are well within what might be considered the area of influence. We have followed the controversy somewhat over the past couple of years, having been solicited to sign a petition opposing the project, which we did not sign. We would like you to know that we fully support the program you intend and fully support it in the location you have begun work on, the southwest corner of Haley and Panorama Drive. The need for many, many such programs is undeniable, and it would seem entirely reasonable that for it to be done in attractive surroundings that would indicate the people participating in such program are not simply to be relegated to an area that would seem like they are nothing but industrial pieces to be processed, but people worthy of respect in their own right. We enclose a small token of practical support, and you may use our names as supporters. It was a modest donation, but it was significant in the sense that they said, “We’re coming forth at this time to let you know that you have support, that we believe in you.” And I want to say something about integrity, that individuals who operate in integrity, who have integrity, can only bring forth integrity. And so, Casa Esperanza’s board is operating in integrity. We know what we’re up to. This is a project that was created out of the faith of people to say, “Let’s do more than talk about it. Let’s contribute to this community in a powerful, visible way by providing a home for women and their children, their young children.” I have a, here, a rendering, and I would like to take this opportunity just to show it, and I think you’ve received it in your previous packages. And this is a rend, a rendering of Casa Esperanza as it will be. Can, can all of you see it? Members of the audience? It is our intention not only to honor our good neighbor agreement, which says that we will reasonably communicate with our neighbors. Of course we will. We want to be a good neighbor. It is our absolute intention to be part of the community, to integrate into the community in a powerful, visible way, to create gardens and places where children can have happy memories and be restored, to offer programs that uplift and inspire. So we’re here today to say thank you for taking this project seriously, for understanding who we are in this project and who we are in this community and who we intend to be. So, and I’d also just wanted to comment about the, the outside of the property, that it’s hot in Bakersfield right now, so we’re not planting, but we are looking forward to an opportunity to renovate the outside and restore it to the jewel that it was to that community. I understand pride and ownership, and we intend to make that a beautiful place to look at and to be part of the community. And I would like to thank the City Council members, staff, for your attention to this matter. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Anyone else who would like to speak in support of staff’s recommendation? Ms. Diltz, come on down.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Go, and City Council and staff. My name is Becky Diltz. I’ve been a part of the Bakersfield community for 41 years. I was a transplant, but I call this my home. I feel blessed to be here. I became involved with Casa Esperanza about two years after their existence, which has been about, for me, about three years ago. And I became involved because at that time Casa Esperanza was at a point where they were looking for partnerships in the community, partners that could help them in the support portion of what their, what their plans were. They had already started the financials. They were working diligently to make sure that they were going to have an endowment fund that worked so that this could be a successful program. That endowment fund is well on its way. It continues to grow each and every year, but for me, it was reaching out and asking where I could see myself supporting this organization. And I am a business owner. I have owned two businesses, still own two businesses here in Kern County since 2000. One of those businesses is a very large temp agency. I have a wonderful business partner, and she values exactly what I value in helping people get jobs in our community. So our first goal was to sit down with Casa Esperanza and identify where in the path these young women would be and how we might be able to support them in the temp world, because many of them probably haven’t had that opportunity to fill out applications. Some of them may or may not have a complete education, and we felt that our team at Continental could sit down and work with them and help them get good jobs, and we felt that that was a role that we could play. So we’ve made a commitment, we’ve worked with our team, and as these young women either finish their education, which is another piece, or they’re ready to go out into the workforce, we will be there side by side, carrying them through. We have mentors ready to go, and I feel like that is the part that I could offer Casa Esperanza. The next piece was financials. I serve on three nonprofit boards. Two of those boards were struggling when I came onboard, and part of it was because finances in nonprofit are not easy. They’re very difficult, but knowing that I was successful in business, knowing that I had other people that surround me that are successful in business, we sat down and we started looking at the financials to make sure it made sense. And, you know, I’m happy to say that the other two nonprofits I serve on, their assets look really good. They’re very successful, and they’re successful because we brought, we came along or they came along with us, and we identified some concerns. So I will tell you that the Casa team is open to the feedback that we have been giving them on the, on the area of finance, and I’m, I am certain, and I would not put my stamp of approval on it if I would say to you that they’re going to fail because of finances. That is just not the case. The next piece was on population health. I serve on a very large hospital system in California, and population health is something I’m very aware of, and part of population health is the fact that we don’t have probably enough of the transitional piece. We have, we have a great, the mission of Kern doing great work. We have, Bakersfield has a great homeless shelter. All of those pieces we need, we need it all, but when you get to a point where you need to be transitioning with family and children, then we don’t have that piece. It’s missing. I would not reinvent another program for Kern County if we had a program that was already successful in the transitional piece, and we don’t. The next piece that I would look at is fundraising. You know, fundraising is, is difficult for some people, but I will tell you, this organization is going to have a fundraiser in the, in two weeks, and we are sold out because there are that many people who believe in the program and who, we have set up what the endowment needs to look like, and I think we are going to be very close to making those numbers so that they never have to look at the principal, they just work off the interest. I do, I do understand the concern of the people who live within that community. They’re not sure, they’re, it’s uncertain, there’s, there’s, it’s disjointed. Somebody’s, you know, we haven’t either talked through it well enough. I’m not sure what the answer is, but I will tell you, the team that I am part of, the advisory team, we are committed to making sure it’s successful, and we are committed to making sure that Casa Esperanza follows, follows through on what they said. As far as having people in your neighborhood that are different than what it was planned for, I’ll be honest with you, I live in a very nice neighborhood, and we have a house that has people with MS children. I love the fact that they’re in my neighborhood, and I will tell you, I go out of my way to make sure that they feel that they’re a part of my neighborhood. We have a senior home in our neighborhood. I don’t, I don’t know how they got the approvals, if that’s part of a program, but I will tell you, we all have to live together in this community. I have never been part of a community that is good like Bakersfield. So I would just ask that if there’s a way for us to come together that, that follows the law, whatever that law is, I don’t know what it looks like. Obviously, I’ve heard some things tonight that I hadn’t heard before, but I wouldn’t, I would implore you to, if it means taking your time and not making a decision here tonight, then we need to do that, but I do think as an organization, I would ask that you come together as a business leader, I would ask that you come together and let’s figure this out, and as community members, I would ask that you come together and let’s, let’s work on this, let’s get in the sandbox together, because this is too good of a community to walk away and for people to think we don’t care. And, you know, we’ll be publicly seen for this, so I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diltz. We have about 44 seconds left. Is there someone else who would like to speak in support of staff’s recommendation? Seeing none, at this time, is there anyone who would like to rebut in opposition? We have five minutes for this segment.
Yes, and I will hopefully not take that. My name is Ryan Dimbowski, a resident on Princeton Street, two houses down from the proposed site. I’m frustrated, we’re here yet again. City Council, we’ve, we’re here, you guys went through the appeals process, voted this down. Timeline, history here. It was really weird then when we found out that Casa Esperanza purchased the home after City Council distinctly said, “No, we don’t have support,” and provided that. And I’d like to just remind the Council that nothing as of now has changed from Casa Esperanza. At the last meeting, it was referred to that their business plan appeared to have been written on a cocktail napkin. We haven’t seen much of a business plan since then, when, since we brought, since we gave our opposition. As far as the neighbors’ concerns, nothing has been addressed. Someone just said up here that they were at the house talking to people. They didn’t talk to any of the neighbors, so I’m really confused by the good neighbor drafting, because we are the neighbors. We haven’t been involved in this process at all. We’ve been overlooked, we’ve been lied about. At the last meeting, Jim Moser got up here and made a statement and said, “Well, yeah, you know, the neighbor said that, that we just need to go someplace else.” That was a bold-faced lie. And so when we talk about integrity and when integrity gets brought up, you had a bunch of neighbors’ heads roll, because we were all in those same meetings, and we’re like, “No one said that.” We expressed concerns over the number of women in the home. We expressed concerns over the fact that they had a severe lack of oversight. There was no oversight plan. Nothing was ever addressed when we brought questions about who’s going to tackle these issues after hours. They were just glossed over. I believe Mr. Weir, and I apologize if I misquote you and if it wasn’t you, again, I apologize, made a statement about, “I don’t see this project succeeding. I don’t see that, this project succeeding, and I don’t see their business plan, and I don’t see their business model as having gotten any better than January when we were here before you.” So if I’m a little frustrated that my time keeps getting wasted by this project with little to no oversight, with the city not having a distinct say in this process, with the neighbors being told that they’re being addressed in a good neighbor policy that they weren’t consulted upon, the neighbors are a little bit confused here, and we’re a little bit frustrated, and we’d expect that our City Council and our city would respect the R1 zoning to protect the neighborhood. Again, we, we don’t know who they’re talking to. It sounds like we’re, they’re having conversations with the city, but let’s take the good neighbor name out of this discussion, because there is no good neighborship. I wouldn’t go get told no from someone, buy a home, start renovations, and then come to this process and go, “Hey, can we, can we actually do this?” That’s not being a good neighbor. That’s actually being a disrespectful neighbor. And so if our neighbors are a little bit frustrated that every concern we’ve ever had has been glossed over, and it’s been told, “This is just going to be great for the women.” This is no guarantee that this is going to be for the women of Bakersfield, for the women of Kern County. Those were concerns that we brought forward. We brought concerns over the number of women. We were told, “Well, no, we can’t operate,” you know, “half the families.” We were talking about putting three families in a home, not six. It’s, this is just baffling to the neighbors. Thank you for protecting our neighborhood the last time we were here, and we continue to look forward for the Council’s support. Thank you again.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? We have about 35 seconds left. Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to rebut in support of staff’s recommendation? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it now to Council for comment and action. See, we have a request from Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Here we go again. I, I can’t believe this is coming back to us. I’ve never had any problem with the goal that you had espoused. I think it’s a, it’s a great goal. I hope you’re successful in that at some point in time and at some other place. I appreciate all that you’re doing, but really, I agree with the last person. Nothing’s really changed. Nothing’s changed. So just, just so I can hear an answer, City Attorney, we’ve gone through the exact process that is required to get to this point. Is that correct? We got to that, and we denied the conditional use permit.
Mayor, Councilmember, that is correct.
Okay. Was there anything wrong with the procedures that we did?
No, sir.
Did we take a vote and we denied it unanimously?
That’s my recollection, 6-0.
You keep talking about this property, and it’s one property, and it’s, you know, you’ll, you’ll try to fit in the neighborhood, but it’s not one property. try to fit into the neighborhood, but it's not one property. It's all R1 zoning. It makes it available for all R1 zoning. That is unacceptable. I hear you talk about being good neighbors, but honestly, I don't feel like you've been good neighbors. I think the way you operate and the way you take actions before actually talking to people and explaining what you're doing and what you're going to do and why you're taking that action, I think that's been void. There's been none of that. So nothing's changed, except we have some bureaucrat in Sacramento that thinks he's got the right answer. Well, I don't know that there's anybody that could tell him or me that he's got the right answer. What does bother me, though, is that same bureaucrat is not afraid to tell the city that, in my opinion, it is extorting money from us for our action. If we don't do it, they will withhold money from us. That's not a good neighbor policy either. They're coming to destroy our zoning, and if we don't do it, they'll just take the Well, you know what? I think sometimes it's worth it to get a real answer, solve the question. And I don't believe that there's any mediation process to go. I think you've met before, and I know you met with Casa Esperanza, met with city staff. Were there any neighbors involved in that meeting?
Vice Mayor, I assume the question is directed at me. There were not neighbors involved in that meeting.
Once again, good neighbor. And how enforceable is that good neighbor policy?
It is, the enforcement is the goodwill and public perception of the commitment to follow through.
There is no enforcement?
There's no formal legal enforcement.
I'm reading some notes, excuse me. I just don't feel any different than I did in January. It's not the right place and it's not worth risking our R1 zoning. And so I move to deny the resolution. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith, followed by Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. My understanding is we're not voting to approve the project. The project is approved by the state per their definition of state law, per housing and community development with the state, and the governor's office agrees. Casa Esperanza does not need to come to us, does not need to create a good neighbor policy, can just move forward with their project. But they have agreed to sit down and sign a policy which is in agreement with the conditions of approval of the CUP, which staff recommended approval for and planning commission approved for an application for a rooming house. And I guess we don't have a rooming house. We have transitional housing according to the state. So I am in no mood to fight the state, whether it's over money or whether it's over them shutting down our development business. There are lots of laws, federal and state, that I don't agree with, but I don't think that it's wise for the city to try and go to court with the federal government and the state government because we don't agree. So I am in favor of this resolution and I appreciate Casa working with the city and look forward to them keeping their promise and being good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gray.
Well, this has been something that's been on my mind since I heard that tonight we were going to take this issue up again. It's something that I prepared ahead for, that I prepared my statement for, so it's not just a knee-jerk reaction to what I've heard tonight here from either party. I want to start out by saying that I do believe in your program, the Casa Esperanza program. I do believe that the intention behind your program is what you all say it is. I'm not questioning that. However, I have decided to vote no on this matter, and I've got this written, so I'm going to read it the way I have it written so I don't miss anything. But I have decided to vote no on this matter in spite of being threatened by the state because this issue is much bigger, honestly, than the neighborhood or Casa Esperanza. This issue has put us in a place that the state of California, once again, is overstepping into our local politics and system. And to me, that's much more important than anything else that we could ever, ever talk about. If we continue to give up our autonomy as a local government because of purse strings out of the state of California, we're in big trouble. The state of California is trying to override our zoning ordinances. That's what this is all about. That's what is on the table tonight. It's not about these neighbors and what you want to do for the good of the city. There's other opportunity for that. But once we give away our right for the state of California to come in any dag on time, they decide they don't agree with us, we're in big trouble. So I want people to look at the bigger picture tonight, not this little small picture, which is a big picture to these neighbors, and I understand that. And it's a big picture to you all, for the women that you want to help, and I understand that. But let's all think out of that box for a little bit. We, as city council members, have been elected by our constituents to take care of the people's business here in the city of Bakersfield. I wasn't elected to Sacramento. I wasn't elected to Washington, DC. I was elected right here in the city of Bakersfield to take care of my constituents' needs and what their feelings would be on this. So I'm not here to take care of the state business tonight. I'm also confident that those who have elected me, especially in a more conservative area as we live in, that my electorate, they want smaller government. They don't want bigger government. They want smaller government. That means we govern from a local level, not from a state level. So I believe that we, as a people in the city of Bakersfield, know what's best for our city, for Bakersfield, California. That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about anything else other than Bakersfield. Not Sacramento bureaucrats, as Ken said, which I already had written down. So regarding the matter at hand, originally, this city council, all of us unanimously voted against the CUP because we thought that was what was right for our community. And now the state is infringing on our local rights and doing another power grab by threatening to withhold funds. Isn't that amazing? Probably the general population, the general public doesn't even understand that. I never understood that before I sat on this council. And what I have seen coming out of the state of California literally sickens me. It sickens me. So I don't want to march in line with what Sacramento tells us we have to do. I want to march in line with what this group of electorate officials for the city of Bakersfield, we made a decision and we made it unanimously. And so in my opinion, this is extortion and that I cannot support. So I will not be voting yes on this. Now, if Casa Esperanza follows our zoning ordinances, I'd be the first one there to support you all and be right behind you. But until that happens, I have to vote no tonight. This is about a bigger issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Other colleagues? Councilmember Arias, Councilmember Freeman, Councilmember Parlier?
This is Councilmember Freeman. I will make a comment.
Go ahead, Councilmember Freeman.
Well, I do express my agreement with virtually everything Councilmember Gray said. We used to have a CUP process. When this project first started legally, we actually had one and had local zoning. And from my talking extensively with the city attorney, the city manager, and other legal people, the state passed legislations and took that all away from us, and they do have the power to do it during the process, just like they took away R1 zoning. We don't have R1 zoning in Bakersfield anymore. No one should be under the illusion, the law passed that we don't have it. Now a person can build a triplex next to you in the middle of your single-family zoning because the state local zoning, they do have the power and they have done it. We didn't know that when we were voting, thinking we had local laws. I voted against this, thinking we had local jurisdiction. But it has been made clear to me, as I think Councilmember Smith said, we do not have the law anymore. We do not have single-family zoning anymore. Casa Esperanza, unfortunately, I mean, unfortunately, not maybe unfortunate to them, but in response to control, they can go ahead with their project. They could have already done it. They can do it tomorrow. There's nothing we can do to stop it by the state and that has superseded our laws. So I don't want anyone to have the illusion that we're talking about enforcing our laws. That law doesn't exist anymore. That's very frustrating to me. I can't stand the way they're removing all local control. But that's the reality. And as Councilmember Smith said, what we're voting on tonight effectively is just a good neighbor policy, which actually is an unenforceable policy. In many ways, I wish this was never even on the agenda. And I do love their purpose, and I think actually they're sincere in trying to be good neighbors, and I think they will. But Casa Esperanza doesn't need to be here tonight. They can build with a no-good neighbor policy, and there's nothing we can do. But I'm not in the illusion that we're voting whether they can build or not. They can go ahead. I do kind of applaud them, since they know this, for moving forward with trying to put together a good neighbor policy anyway. And they didn't have to do that. But this is where we are tonight, unfortunately, and it's a difficult decision. But I guess I see this clearly now, whether we want symbolically a good neighbor policy for this project that's going to go forward regardless of what the city council, because the state took our power away. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Arias, Councilmember Parlier, do you wish to speak? Councilmember Parlier wishes to speak. Go ahead, Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand the arguments on both sides by my colleagues, but for me, it boils down to this. All seven of us are elected to represent our own areas. I know my area extremely well and my constituents extremely well, and I think every council member on the dais, without exception, knows their area and constituents extremely well. So I give difference to my colleagues for their areas, for their constituents. I've tried to do this since serving on the council with all of my colleagues, and I'm not going to change now, and I'm going to support you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Arias.
I want to thank the residents for coming out, first of all, tonight. I think it's important to engage with your local government and to share your opinion, your concerns, your stories. You are the experts in the field, so I appreciate you guys coming forth and attempting to work with Casa Esperanza, work with city staff, work with myself and my colleagues on this important issue. I also want to thank Casa Esperanza for the work that you do aside from tonight's issue. Thank you so much for every single life that you touch, every single woman, every single child that you take through your program. Thank you so much. It's critical work, and frankly, we need more of it. So thank you so much. As it relates to the issue tonight, like Councilmember Parlier said, I can see the arguments on both sides of the issue, but ultimately, I think that our city, you know, there's not a single day that I think goes by where I, and probably many of my colleagues can agree, where we don't take a call on homelessness. Every single day, every single week since I've been on council and even before that, during my time working with Assemblymember Salas and before that Supervisor Press, it's been year after year, we take call after call about how we're not doing enough, how we need to be doing more, how even though we continue to spend at unprecedented levels to address some of these issues, it's still not enough, right? Your local business owner, maybe downtown or in different parts of the area, will come out and, you know, continue to face the same issues that they've been facing as it relates to homelessness. And frankly, I think that, you know, the more that our city and our local government can partner with organizations like Casa Esperanza to continue to do the good work, the better, frankly. And with that, I just want to share some of the 2021 Point in Time Count report that was taken earlier this year on the number of folks that are facing homelessness. For adults, we had combined 1,633 individuals who are suffering from homelessness. Aside from that, we had adults with children, 174, and children specifically, 343, for a total of 2,150. Sometimes I think we forget that, you know, the policies that we make and the decisions that we make right here on the dais actually affect lives. And tonight, I think we have a And tonight, I think we have a good opportunity to really do some good work for six families here in our community. With that, I'm in full support of this good neighbor policy.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir.
Yes, I'm wondering if the city attorney could provide any more clarification for us.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I would like an opportunity, particularly for our listening audience, to perhaps clarify or respond to the statement by Councilmember Freeman, because again, I know he's not here tonight for our listening audience. But I think perhaps some of us may have, when we were listening to it, thought that the state has passed a law that said there's no more R1 zone. And I want to make that very clear, that that's not the case, that we still have R1 zoning. I think the issue that staff has struggled with is that the way the state is interpreting transitional housing, and in particular, the statement that Kristin brought up, the way the HCD is interpreting that is that if you have transitional housing, that it doesn't matter, it's automatically an R1. And I want to make it also very clear that I don't think it's been proven that Casa Esperanza's transitional housing. And if it is, in fact, supportive housing, the law clearly says that supportive housing shall be a use by right in all zones where multifamily and mixed uses are permitted. So again, I wanted to provide some context to Councilmember Freeman's statement, that if Casa Esperanza is a transitional housing, and if one takes the logic from the state and HCD, then yes, they are allowed by right in an R1. But if they are supportive housing, even under current state law, they are not allowed in an R1 by right. They would have to go into a multifamily zone. So again, just a little bit of context to that statement. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman, any comments on that? I can't see you, so I just don't know who else.
This statement is made perfectly clear, and they do have the upper hand in this. This is going to be a by-right housing, and I don't have any illusions on that. So I'm not happy about it. To me, when you've taken the R1 zoning that we used to have, that meant you could not build a triplex next door to me in my R1, you could not put transitional housing next to me, I say that we do not have the same R1 zoning that we used to have. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. You have a motion, Madam Clerk?
Did we have a motion?
Yes, the motion is by Vice Mayor Weir, a motion to deny the resolution. So again, it's one of these tricky ones, but if you vote in favor of the motion, that would be a denial of the resolution. So again, a vote yes to the motion is no resolution.
Does anyone have any questions on that?
Ginny, could you clarify that one more time, please? I want to make sure that we get this right.
Yes, sir. I'm trying to think of another way of saying it. The Vice Mayor made a motion to deny the resolution. So if you vote in favor of that, there is no good neighbor policy.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Arias.
No.
Councilmember Gonzalez is abstaining. Councilmember Smith.
No.
Councilmember Freeman.
No.
Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Parlier.
Yes.
There is a tie vote with Vice Mayor Weir, Councilmember Patty Gray, and Councilmember Chris Parlier voting yes, Councilmember Eric Arias, Councilmember Bob Smith, and Councilmember Bruce Freeman voting no. Mayor Go.
Thank you. These are always the most challenging positions to be in. Certainly, I am one that supports local control. And I believe that we ought to have that opportunity. But do we actually, in this situation, have that opportunity where the state has said that this is transitional housing and it's a by-right use? Neighbors, we've heard your concerns. I've also heard Casa Esperanza's communication that there has been some communication with the neighbors. I've heard board members of Casa Esperanza speak, board members who certainly are well-thought-of in our community. And tonight, the focus really is on the good neighbor policy. I would love to support everybody, but we know that that is not possible. I take this very, very seriously. But I don't believe that this is the appropriate place, much as I believe in local control. I don't believe this is the appropriate place to make that statement. If we want to bring this before the state in another way, I think that would be appropriate. But as I look at the opportunity for those who have the opportunities ahead of them, who have faced great struggles, we do have a gap in our community. What Casa Esperanza is bringing forth is not a drug rehab program. The people, we have many programs like that. We have programs in our community that address people who are coming off drugs, who are coming off the streets. We do not have transitional programs. We do not have programs where people are further along in their journey. They're there on hard luck, not necessarily for drug uses. And they need that support that we can give them as a community. This is about being a good neighbor. And I believe there is opportunity for Casa Esperanza, for the neighborhood to come together. And I do not believe, much as I do want to support local control, I do not believe that this is a place for me to do that, and I'm going to vote no.
Motion fails.
Do we need another motion? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I would move staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Weir.
He had to leave.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez is abstaining. Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
I'm sorry, you need to clarify this for me.
Councilmember Gray, it's just the opposite motion, so it's a motion to approve the resolution.
Then that's a no.
Councilmember Parlier.
No.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent, Councilmember Gonzalez abstaining, Councilmember Gray, and Councilmember Parlier voting no.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 13A, New Business, League of California Cities Annual Conference, City Position on Proposed By-Law Amendments.
City Manager Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is actually related to the action that you took at your last meeting that was in support of the resolutions that will be taken up at the League of Cities Conference this coming week. This item wasn't a late add to the consideration for the board to look at their bylaws. This would essentially create some new positions on the board to ensure some broader representation. Mayor Go has been engaged in the conversation on this extensively. Staff has engaged in this topic, and we believe that we can support that resolution. And this would just provide our voting delegate, the formal authority, to weigh in on that bylaw change at the league conference next week.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
I would move to adopt the recommendation, position on the changes in the League of California Cities bylaws.
You have a motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Weir. Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Parlier.
Aye.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. And now, next item, please.
Council and Mayor Statements.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment tonight, thanking publicly the Director of Recreation and Parks, Mr. Rick Anthony, and our city manager, Christian Clegg, and folks in the city manager's office for responding to some requests I've had for the last couple of weeks regarding Central Park at Mill Creek and the Mill Creek Linear Path and the Sister City Gardens. There have been a number of chronic issues that we're starting to address there, and I really appreciate the proactive nature. And I just want to thank all of staff for their continued support in downtown Bakersfield. But also brings up an important point I wanted to lift up for the council. You know, I think it was Councilmember Freeman who had brought up in the past the need for us to really focus on our existing assets and develop strategies to better maintain those assets before we begin looking at trying to build out new stuff. And I think that's a really important point, and it really, for me, has been crystallized looking at Central Park. You know, it's only been a few short years since the city really invested significant dollars, millions of dollars, to build out the Mill Creek Linear Park, the Sister City Gardens, and really make improvements to Central Park. It was intended to be a gem and really a crown jewel for downtown Bakersfield as the city pushed and has been pushing downtown redevelopment for years. And yet, I think there's, over the years, some room for improvement in terms of maintenance of those assets. And so I think it's important for us to really use that as a case study, learn how we can better maintain these assets, how we can improve them, and how we can demonstrate to the larger public and to our taxpayers that when we invest these precious dollars into new projects, that we are actually going to maintain them, and in 10 years from now, they're not going to decay and decline. And so I'd like us to, as a council, in our next workshop related to goals and visioning, that we take up that particular issue as well, because I think it was an important lesson for me over the last couple of weeks. And I think it's something that we need to discuss more and more as we look at significant investments with all these new dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Gray.
I would agree with that, Councilmember Gonzalez. It's always better to take care of what you have before you build new, so thank you for that. Last weekend, we commemorated the 9/11 20-year anniversary, and I was fortunate enough, I hope many, well, we had a lot of the public come, but I just want to say publicly how proud I am of our city once more. I'm just amazed by how we honor our fallen first responders, how we honor our military. So many have given them their service or ultimately their lives to protect us and to protect our liberty. So I wanted to publicly say thank you for what you do every day out there. Unfortunately, it often goes unnoticed. Also want to say thank you to the public for supporting the events. I know we had many of them all over the city of Bakersfield. And again, we're a very unique city in that regard, and I'm so blessed to live here. But all those events took place because of the generous support of sponsors and volunteers, and our city shined on 9/11. So in that, I just want to say, let us never forget 9/11 and be acutely aware that we do indeed have foreign and even domestic enemies that would want to destroy our great nation. And let's be vigilant, active, and brave to keep this republic in good stead. John Adams wrote this, "Liberty, once lost, is lost forever." Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Any other colleagues? Councilmember Gray, you talked about unity, and certainly 9/11, I had a chance to witness how our country came together, how New York City came together as I was there. That's the opportunity that we have before us. There are decisions that we make that are extremely hard, and we have to do what our own conscience dictates. We have to do what's best in our conscience as we listen to one another. But even though we don't agree on many things sometimes with each other, we have to find a way to come together. And city of Bakersfield, that's what I would call upon you to do. We have that opportunity to learn as we've commemorated 20 years, what can we take away? Yes, we're going to have divergent viewpoints. That's the privilege of living in the United States of America. But may we remember, it's the United States of America. So let's continue to come together. May Bakersfield be that example. There's so much divisiveness, there's so much polarization. May our actions show that we can come together in unity as we support one another, as we care for one another, as we care for the city of Bakersfield and our great country. I don't see any other requests to speak, and so we're adjourned at 4:00. At 7:47.